Can everybody please take their seat? Yeah, I know. That sounds very... No, I don't need one. It's okay. Good evening. This is Harold Watson, zoning chair of the Stratford Zoning Commission, that now sits for a special zoning commission administrative work session on Wednesday, July 24th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. The quorum for this meeting is four, and I will now call the following elected commissioners: Zone One Commissioner Linda Manos; Zone Two Commissioner Ewol Joseph; Zone Three Commissioner, myself Harold Watson here; Zone Four Commissioner Deborah Lamberty; and Zone Five Commissioner Lynn Patricelli. Alternates in attendance include Rich Fredette; we also welcome Jay Abansky, Planning and Zoning Administrator; Gail DeCilio, our Recording Secretary; Patricia Sullivan, our zoning legal counsel. The public may only speak at the invitation of Chair during this administrative hearing.
Not tonight.
Not tonight, all right? With that said, I call to order this special administrative session of the Stratford Zoning Commission at 6:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. We're now going to go to our agenda for tonight. I'd like to just make one or two comments before we start, so I can lay out what we're going to be doing. We have six different votes that we need tonight on the six different projects that are before us. All six of them have the same condition list. So what we are going to do first is read through point by point all of the, I think it's sixteen conditions, seventeen conditions. And we will stop based on your guys' understanding of the information that we had. And if there's any comments or any revisions that need to be made, we will make an amendment at that point before we vote on the whole text. That amendment then will carry over to the other five parcels that we're voting on. Does it make sense? Yes, we're going to take everything off the table at one time. Then we're going to go through the decision approved with conditions. We're going to go through all of the seventeen conditions for number one, and then we'll go right into voting on number one as one of the six votes we're going to take tonight. Makes sense, everybody? Okay, so, I can read the whole thing, or we can go through it. Let me, let me read. There are two issues that I've identified that we need to stop and do a short amendment on. So I'm going to, I'll read one and two, and then we'll go, Lenny, two and three and four. No. You don't. So we need a motion to take it off the table. All six of them. Second, anybody? Do we need to do anything else? Ewol, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. I'm going to start with number one. When we get to number thirteen and number sixteen, I want to put forward two amendments. All recommendations made by the town engineer in their memos dated 6/14/2024 and 7/8/2024 shall be strictly followed. Prior to the commencement of any work, any site work, demolition, or stockpiling of fill, the applicant shall receive a letter from the town engineering stating that all recommendations have been addressed in a set of revised plans to be submitted to the Office of Planning and Zoning. It's my understanding that that's underway right now, and that a lot of the things we asked for in that and that John asked for have already been accomplished, but we're going to leave this in here to support what we're asking for. Number two. All recommendations made by the Health Department in their memo dated 7/20/24 shall be strictly followed. Prior to the commencement of any site work, demolition, or stockpiling of fill, the applicant shall receive a letter from the Health Department stating that all recommendations have been addressed in a set of revised plans to be submitted to the Office of Planning and Zoning. These were the two parties that we were trying to represent at our last meeting. Lenny, you want to continue?
Number three. Prior to the commencement of any site work, demolition, or stockpiling of fill, the applicant shall submit a set of revised plans for both the north and south sites reflecting all applicable recommendations and conditions of approval made by the Office of Planning and Zoning, Town Engineer, Health Department, WHMC, and DEEP. Number four. All eleven recommendations provided by DEEP in their memo dated 7/10/2024 shall be strictly followed. Number five. All recommendations provided by the Harbor Waterfront Commission in their memo dated 7/10/2024 shall be strictly followed.
Linda. Number six.
Number six. No piles of fill or similar materials shall exceed a total height of 21 feet tall. Number seven. For the south parcel, all piles of fill shall setback a minimum of 60 feet from Main Street or at the distance deemed to be appropriate by the Planning and Zoning Administration. For the, for the north parcel, all piles of fill shall be setback minimum of 30 feet from Main Street or at a distance deemed to be appropriate by the Planning and Zoning Administration.
Deborah.
Any piles of fill that are anticipated to be stockpiled for longer than 30 calendar days shall be stabilized with seed and mulch, hydroseed, or some similar stabilization treatment to prevent fugitive dust and sediment. Nine. All stockpiles shall be protected with a temporary linear sediment barrier prior to the onset of precipitation. Ten. The site shall have daily mechanical sweeping on paved areas where dust and fine materials accumulate as a result of heavily trafficked areas, truck traffic, pavement, saw, cutting spillage, and wind or water deposition from adjacent disturbed areas. Eleven. All dust, dirt, or sediment shall be contained on a site by best management practices. Any use of water to mitigate fugitive dust and sediment shall be collected and treated accordingly.
Ewol. Pull it close.
Okay, in the event of, well, what's, what I'm reading, eleven?
Yeah, you got, you got it.
Twelve. Twelve, okay. In the event of hurricane or coastal storm event, an emergency action plan shall be submitted prior to the commencement of any work and kept on file with the Office of Planning and Zoning. Thirteen. A temporary eight-feet-to-ten-feet-tall fence with decorative mesh.
Jay, you have your stuff.
Fence screening shall be installed along the street lot lines of sites and to completely screen the demolition work and stockpiling of fire piles. At the intersection of Main Street and Sniffin Lane, the fence screening shall have signage for each business of Sniffin Lane and indicate that they are still open to four businesses. Final signage of artwork and artwork for each business shall be administratively approved by the Office of Ecology and Community Development prior to installation. Such temporary fences and screening shall be maintained for the duration of the entire project.
John, stop. Can you stop there, because this is where we had one amendment. I want Jay to explain what he's proposing to this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the site does have varying existing fences, and there was some discussion between staff about whether it's necessary for an eight-to-ten-foot temporary fence or to allow the applicant to use the variety of six, eight, and ten-foot fences that are existing and to put the screening on those existing fences. You know, obviously, this would say the applicant probably, you know, would save them some money, so they wouldn't have to have all consistent eight-to-ten-foot fence. The reason why eight-to-ten feet was suggested was to appropriately screen the stockpiling and a lot of the activity that are happening behind this fence. We felt eight-to-ten feet was going to be appropriate, so I just wanted to present that to you. You have the opportunity to amend what we suggested from eight-to-ten feet to six, eight, and ten feet. And that's entirely up to you, what you all feel is most appropriate to screen this site from, you know, negative impacts from public view.
Are the majority of them still eight and ten?
Eight and ten is fine. Yeah.
I can't say what a majority of them are. They're really, they're kind of all over. They're all over the place. I mean, I think that maybe we, you could, if the south site, which I think is most visible, as the applicant discussed at the last meeting, the demolition will be behind the main facade of that building, and so probably most of that is going to be screened until the very, very end when that last frontage wall comes down. So maybe you could say eight, six, eight, or ten feet, and the south parcel at Sniffin is required to be a minimum of eight. I'm just trying to come up with some options for you all.
There is no fence on the south wall right now.
There is.
Oh, there is.
There's fence there.
How tall is it?
I think that is six. I believe it's six feet at the Sniffins parking lot.
Can they make an adjustment to eight at least?
And that's for you all to determine what you feel is most appropriate. I would certainly support keeping them all at eight to ten, but if you felt that six feet in some of the other areas on the north lot is appropriate, I'm good with that. And we can just state that a temporary fence, eight-to-ten feet tall, be placed around the south parcel frontage on Main Street, and six, eight, and ten at all other locations. I think that might...
Six, eight, ten, existing fencing can be used.
And I think that might, that might cover, you know, unnecessary additional cost in fencing for the applicant. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
It follows what they did with the previous, with the previous remediation of the land closer to the sound. When they had up fencing there, they did a similar treatment for two years, I guess, when they remediated part of that parcel.
And so I can just repeat that one more time. For the south parcel, an eight-to-ten-foot-tall fence, temporary fence, shall be, shall be installed and along Main Street, and then the remaining portions of the site may use six, eight, or ten-foot existing or temporary fence with the additional screening on it as well.
Do we want to vote on this? Do we want to come back? Well, we have to decide, do we want that amendment? Yeah, so do, let's do a mini-vote first on, do we want this amendment? We're going to do a vote. Is there a discussion? Someone make a motion to accept this amendment?
I will.
I'll make a motion to accept the amendment.
Okay. Discussion? Oh, we need a second, I'm sorry. Ewol.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Or vote? Accepting it? Yes, okay, a roll call vote on this amendment.
Yes.
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 Yes, five zero. Thank you, guys. Let's continue now on with, Lenny, we're coming back to you with fourteen. Microphone.
Given the duration of this project and intense volume of the heavy trucks accessing the site, a corporate representative shall meet with the mayor or her designee to address any concerns regarding damage, wear, and tear, excuse me, along Lordship Boulevard and Access Road, and how to partner in the upkeep of the trucking route. The applicant shall conduct daily air quality monitoring throughout the entire demolition, remediation, and fill activity process. All concerns regarding the air quality shall be addressed immediately.
Okay, I'm going to take the next one, because that's the one I wanted to ask for an amendment on.
Okay.
Number sixteen. The applicant shall create a publicly accessible website that provides updates on the status of current development phase and other general information. The website shall provide a corporate contact for inquiries and complaints. The corporate contact shall provide a report of issues to the planning, Office of Planning and Zoning, here it says quarterly, highlighting how the issues were resolved. I would like to change that from quarterly to monthly. It's not really going to be extra work if they're, if they're approaching these issues and solving them, but it will allow us, the transparency, to know if there's any problem that we need to be concerned with. Can we make a, do you want to discuss that, or can we make a motion to make that change?
Yep. I made that motion to make that change.
Someone second that?
To monthly.
Second.
All in favor, roll call again. Ewol?
Yes.
Deborah?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Lenny?
Yes.
Harold, yes, okay, five zero. And then seventeen. I'm going to give this to Deborah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Prior to the commencement of any approved work, the applicant shall submit a packet of exhibits to the zoning enforcement officer for administrative approval detailing how all applicable conditions of approval have been satisfied.
And I'd like to make one other comment. There was, I saw a reaction to the 21 feet, the height of the dirt piles. That was something that we discussed with the parties. They wanted, we wanted sixty, and they, we wanted thirty, and they wanted sixty. We came up with 21 as a compromise, so I think that is there for a purpose. Okay, anything else? Would anyone like to make a motion? We are voting on all of the conditions that actually will become the conditions for all six of the projects. Do we, someone make a motion, and we can discuss it?
It's only to accept the conditions. So moved.
No discussion? Someone seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, roll call for this.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye. Five zero. Okay, great, thank you. Now we're going to go to the first project. I'll just read it so we can get out of here. R. Ree, 550 Main Street, South Parcel, MBL 5524, petition of Point Stratford Renewal LLC seeking an erosion and sediment control review for the stockpiling and placement of fill regarding remediation activities and to advance the site for redevelopment. We need a motion to accept this and understanding that the, this will include the decisions approved with conditions that were amended this evening.
Don't we have to take it off the table first?
I thought we took all of these off the table.
Did we?
Yeah. Yeah, we took them all off the table. Would anyone like to make a motion, and then we can discuss?
Motion to approve?
Anybody second? Anybody second?
I second.
Okay, Ewol seconds. Discussion?
Can I make a suggestion that we just go through them all and then do discussion at the end, since they're all the same? The discussion's going to be the same for all six.
The only thing is, we have to, with the approved, the previously approved conditions have to be included into each one.
That's correct. So I, I think you will all make a motion to approve with the previously discussed and agreed upon conditions of approval.
And the amend, and the two amendments that we added.
And then maybe, Mr. Chairman, you would like to allow folks, at the last item, to have discussion in general about the project, if you'd like.
Okay, is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okay, let's do that.
Conditions, I'm sorry, Attorney Sullivan, a motion to approve with the conditions as amended. Thank you.
Conditions. As amended.
Okay, so...
Did we vote on his motion?
No, I, so I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll restate it. Motion to approve with the conditions of approval as amended.
Second.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Ewol. All in favor? Roll call. We're going to do, continue doing roll call. I'm not giving names, though, but we...
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye. Five zero, okay. Now we're going on to the second, the second one. 550 Main Street, South Parcel, MBL 5524, petition of Point Stratford Renewal...
Excuse me. I thought we went through it already. This is, the second is on north.
Excuse me?
It's north. The second is north parcel.
I would recommend that as we read these off...
Oh, I'm sorry.
We read off the ones that are on the agenda.
I'm sorry, I was using, I was just, I was using the documents, I can do, I can do that.
Oh, okay.
So I hate to have you do this, but just to make sure that we're getting it all right, let's just start from the first item on the agenda.
Okay.
Sorry, Commissioner Lamberty, I'm going to make you do it again.
Oh, that wasn't the first one?
No, that was the first one.
North was the first one.
I think, let me just check to make sure.
You did number, you did...
Yeah, 24. North Parcel. Oh, you didn't put north and south in this list.
North and south are on the decision letters. That's, I recommend we go out, work, go off the work agenda in that order.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my motion?
Yeah, and we'll revote.
So do you have to reread?
Do you want me to reread one, and we'll vote, and then you...
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, I'll, we'll do this. First, first item, 550 Main Street, MBL 554, petition of Point Stratford Renewal LLC seeking a... Petition of Point Stratford Renewal LLC seeking a coastal site plan review for the stockpiling and placement of fill regarding remediation activities and to elevate the site for redevelopment.
Motion to approve with the amended conditions of approval that we previously stated.
All right.
I'll second that.
Second that, Linda?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nope, we're doing it.
Aye.
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 Aye, five zero, okay.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
When we get to number six, let's not vote on that until the commissioners have a chance to discuss it, because if you vote on it, we're done. We don't get an opportunity to say...
That's what we're planning on doing. We're going to take the last one and discuss the whole thing.
When we get to number six, we'll not vote to approve it until we...
Right.
Get the, make...
Well, as part of discussion, we'll, we'll...
Discussion, comments, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, we'll be discussing the whole thing, and then we'll go and vote on the last one. Okay, number two. Did you just do two?
We were out of order, you know, out of order on the agenda.
Yeah, I know, I didn't realize that. Sorry.
So number two, we saw, right?
Oh, I thought you were reading it, but, okay. 550, no, no, 550 Main, Main Street, MBL 5524, petition of Point Stratford LLC seeking an erosion and sediment control review for the stockpiling and placement of fill regarding remediation activities and to elevate the site for redevelopment.
Oh, Jesus, where are we?
I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve with the conditions as previously amended.
All in favor?
Second.
Oh, second, sorry. Linda? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ewol?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero, okay. Number three. 550 Main Street, MBL 5524, petition of Point Stratford Renewal LLC seeking an erosion and sediment control review for the demolition, remediation activities, and related site work. Debbie, you want to continue doing that? You're so good at it.
Motion to approve with the conditions as previously amended.
Second that.
All in favor? Ewol gave a second. All in favor, Ewol?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Okay, the next one, we're at number four. 550, excuse me? Okay. 550 Main Street, MBL 5513, petition of Point Stratford Renewal LLC seeking a coastal site plan review for the stockpiling and placement of fill regarding remediation activities and to elevate the site for redevelopment.
Motion to approve with the conditions as previously amended.
Second by Linda, Ewol?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero, okay. We're going on to number five. 550 Main Street, MBL 5513, petition of Point Stratford Renewal LLC seeking an erosion and sediment control review for the stockpiling and placement of fill regarding remediation activities and to elevate the site for redevelopment. Do you want your motion?
Motion to approve with the conditions as previously amended.
Someone second? Second by Linda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, five zero. We're going on to number six. 550 Main Street, MBL 5513, petition of Point Stratford Renewal LLC seeking an erosion and sediment control review for the demolition and remediation activities and related site work.
Motion to approve with the conditions as previously amended.
All, second, someone?
Second.
Hold it open for discussion, it's number six.
We're not going to vote on this yet. Now we're going to stop and have discussion on the whole project. We got a second on that.
Yep.
So we're going to do some discussion, and then after discussion, we will vote on this sixth, and that will take us through everything. So now I will open the floor to discussion.
Thanks. You know, one of the problems I have with this, and unfortunately, we don't have any control over it, is what's going to be built there, because what's before us is just remediation. So we really can't get involved in what's going to be built there in the future, so...
Well...
And I want people to understand that. People say, well, we cannot discuss what's going to be built there, that's not what's before us. There will be another, I won't be here, which they'll probably all be happy, that I won't be here when the next thing comes along to get built. So we're not going to be here for that. The other problem I have is, and I also understand with the developers, it's a very expensive thing to clean up the waterway, but I have a problem that we're not really utilizing that property the way Stratford should use it. And again, I have no control over that. Because if I tell them you have to clean up the waterway, they're going south, because they're not going to do that because of the cost involved. Maybe by the time they're done, they can find somebody that will do it. That would make the property, in my opinion, more valuable to them.
Lynn, if I could comment on that, because I asked the remediation specialist that they brought in at the, at the public meeting about that, and they said that the determination, not by them, but by DEP, is that that waterway is not as polluted post-remediation as it was. That some of it will always be polluted, but in terms of what they did to it, they have lowered the volume immensely with what's there. It doesn't address what they're doing, and it doesn't address all issues, but there has been attention paid to it. It's not like they're just ignoring it.
I'm just saying it would be nice if it could be usable. It would be a strong benefit to the town, but we need to approve it so the town can start getting tax dollars to get it cleaned up.
And currently, right...
It's a catch-22.
Right, currently, it's a brownfield, it's a, that can't be built on by anything.
Right, right, so it's a catch-22, you don't want to, you can't do it, but you would like to see it totally done.
It's in a FEMA flood zone, which really can't be built on either without the elevation, so...
A question, they cannot build, ever build apartments there?
That is deeded on the, on the document.
Okay, all right, fine.
I understand.
Okay.
Because the land will never be clear enough, nor will it ever be elevated. Because the land will never be clear enough, nor will it ever be elevated enough. And they would end up having to put housing on stilts, but there's no, the fill is not gonna be suitable for, for putting stilts in either, so they're kind of, it's, it is what it is. Uh, that's my understanding from reading up FEMA, FEMA and DEP and, and federal documents about this site.
Okay, thank you.
Do you mean at the end of, at the end of this project, there, this place would not be uh, suitable for housing?
It will never be suitable for housing. We don't want people living on land that, long term-
So, what are they going to build there, though?
That's, you know what, that's gonna be up to them to come back to us with a project-
No housing?
But they're, they're not the one that's deciding that.
Huh? I'll be here.
Ewald, they're not deciding that. That's, that comes with the deed from the federal government, Department of Defense or whoever it was that owned it. They recognize that, that people should not live on this land. That's not un, that's not unusual for brown, brownfields, that you have to be very careful about building housing on brownfields, 'cause they've learned that you can end up with a lot of buildings that have to be torn down. So it is what it is. And they bought the property understanding that.
Call the question to move on number six.
Anybody else wanna make a comment? Jay, do you wanna make a final comment before we do this?
I just have a question about the, building the apartments or whatever on the premises.
And I'll just caution the commission, we will be seeing applications, so be cautious about what you say you want and don't want, um, just so there isn't a perception that there's bias or predetermination. Not, not that we can't discuss it, just, I just wanted to warn everyone.
Well, what I was gonna say, previous um, builders or, uh, we're gonna put apartments, condos on that premises, so I don't know, is there three ways of cleaning it up, or what, is there different ways of cleaning that land up? I don't know. But previous people were gonna put condos up there.
Well, Linda, that predates having to do, raise the ground level.
Yeah.
That, back in those days, they weren't talking about that. Now, it's not buildable by anything without doing that elevation.
I'm talking four years ago, five years ago.
Well, if you gotta put stilts in, the ground won't support them. I mean, you wanna live in a building, it's gonna fall down.
Anybody else? Will someone move a vote then? Or we are, we're ready for a vote? Oh, so then we're ready to vote, okay. Fine. You already read it, though, right? We just need to vote. So I'm gonna ask each of you, and this time I won't say your name. Mr. Ewald?
Yes.
Ms. Lombardi?
Aye.
Ms. Manos?
Aye.
Mr. Petichelli?
Yes.
Mr. Watson? Aye, five zero. Thank you very much, everybody, I appreciate it. Uh, do we have anything else on? No, I, I, we need to make a, a revision to minutes, but we also, you need, we need to make very sure that we have a meeting coming up on-
And I'll bring those up after you all vote in minutes.
Okay, let's do the revision on the minutes of last, it's a spelling correction. Ms. Lombardi?
Motion to approve the minutes with the spelling correction.
Go with one.
Okay, anything else?
We need a second on that.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now you, Jay?
Yes, uh, no, no zoning enforcement, uh, from my end. Just a few other items, and I sent some emails out, but I'm sending out a lot, so I'll just mention it one more time. Our typical administrative session that we would have August fourteenth, um, we plan on discussing some of the most, introducing the most significant changes to the zoning regulations to the commission here, uh, so that you all have a good, can start thinking about, you know, what those changes might be. I'm hoping that we're gonna have some tech, technical memorandums with those to show what the changes actually look like with redlined, you can see what has been changed and what is new. Uh, you know, I think at that point, of, just a few, a week later, I will be meeting with the planning commission to be going over, introducing some of these changes as well, as they are gonna be giving a, a recommendation on a lot of these changes. So I think it'll be a real, it'll be a good idea to start introducing these things early on, um, but I'll let you all make that determination whether you wanna make an official ref- in, informal referral to the planning commission. As of now, I am on the agenda for the next planning commission's meeting.
And this puts us a little more educated than when it goes to the planning, because otherwise, we would end up in a situation where planning would be, end up, end up getting this document before we have a time, time to even look at it. And then the next time we meet, we're gonna be meeting jointly, so it should educate us with the points that are in this, that-
But we vote on it last and it goes to the council?
We vote on it last and, I, I don't know if it does go to council, I think that's it.
Doesn't go to council?
My understanding, the zoning commission is the final say for this document. You all are the shepherds of the zoning regulations.
All right, thank you.
So everything is informal right now, but be ready for, uh, August fourteenth, uh, a meeting where this is all we're gonna discuss, have a little work session with our consultant. After that, uh, and after I meet with the planning commission, and everyone has a chance to look at these major changes, we're then gonna have the workshop, open house workshop on September eleven at the Baldwin Center, where you all can actually hear what some of the residents feel and how they're reacting maybe to some of these changes. And then we plan on having follow-up work sessions independently, uh, going forward after that. So I just wanted to let everyone know some of those meetings, please reserve those, um...
But here is where we, your job as a, as zoning really comes in, because it's gonna be a whole bunch of tables, each one's gonna be led by one of our members, along with other people, but you're gonna be responsible for a table of eight to ten people. So you, you're gonna need to have some cl- clarity about the, the information that's being put forward to them. So that will give you, give you a month from between when we do it in August and then when we do it in September, right? Am I correct?
Correct.
I have the right? That'll give you a month to really read up on this and, and be able to explain it to the general public when they come and sit.
And, and don't worry about the workstations. You know, staff and consultants will be there to help explain technical things. We really want you all there to help facilitate the conversation as Stratford residents and being the ones who are ultimately adopting these, you can hear some of these preferences that maybe, uh, you might get from the residents. So we want you to be there to, to smile, help facilitate conversation, and staff will help answer technical questions at the workshop, so. Questions on that? If anyone has any, please reach out.
All, all, I, I can only give you my, my opinion on this, that I think that the consultants we hired have been doing a very good job. The little bit of information that I've spoken to Jay about with this is, they've managed to tailor a short, much shorter list of the major items that need to be discussed, so it's manageable. What Jay's gonna show us are all of the word changes and the technical language changes and all of that. They don't necessarily need to know all of that, but what Jay has identified and the consultants have identified are the major issues that actually do need to be presented before the public.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and I just wanted to reiterate, I would say ninety percent of the changes to the zoning regulations are clarifying language. We're not changing policy, it's taking nineteen forties language and making it more understandable to what we're, what we do today. So more interpret, easy to interpret our regulations and really just changing the formatting to make it more clear and more consistent. Because we had people over the years changing these regulations in different formats, so ninety percent of it is organization and cleaning up language that is hard to interpret. The remaining ten percent are these significant changes. Thank you.
Good. Will someone make a motion to close?